...the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of British hands, one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everybody for appearing tonight. And Mr. Latchmore, would you call or we'll call for attendance, please?
Trustee Pelkey.
Here.
Trustee Menard.
Here.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Arnold.
Present.
Mayor LaBouny.
Here. I'm going to open up the meeting to the public. Before I do that, I'm going to read some guidelines for the public comment. Individuals listening to speak during public comment period must sign in. Speakers must be recognized by the mayor. Speakers must step to the front of their room. Speakers must give their name, address, and occupation if they belong to any. Speakers must limit their remarks to five minutes. Speakers may not yield any remaining time to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, interrupt the speaker during the remarks only for the purpose of clarification or information. All remarks must be addressed to the board as a body, not to an individual board member. And finally, speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may also address the board by written communication. The first speaker we have on the list is Brittany Turner.
Hello, I'm Brittany Turner. I'm from One Mountain Maple Street, right here in Ross's Point. I'm petitioning the board to change the ordinance to allow us chickens to be raised here in the village of Ross's Point. On the recommendation of Mr. LaBouny at the last meeting, I took, put together a petition, gathered some signatures. I'm about 150. I feel like it's a good start in the right direction. If there's more is needed, I can definitely go out there and get more. But I feel like the residents are interested, and I feel like now is the time that we need to change this law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have received your permission, and all the board members have. We're going to review the petition, and we have some work to do. If we, you know, we have to amend the laws as it stands now, and we have to adapt. If we do adapt the law concerning the chickens in the village, above the size of the yard and a few other things before we can make that determination. But I do appreciate you taking the initiative to get this petition, and it shows that we have a good part of our village that is interested in this particular venture and trust we serve at the pleasure of the people, and if this is what the people of the village of Ross's Point want, we will provide it for them. But like I said, I'm going to do some research, and we'll move forward on this as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I did include also the, the change of platform height, just to help you guys out, make it a little easier.
No, no. You had a very good petition, and I'll commend you for your ambition, young lady.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next speaker is Adam Kobe.
Gokey.
Gokey. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
So I'm on Seven Pine Drive. There's a new stop sign on Maple and is it Pine Street? I talked to a lot of people. It's new, and not many people realize it, and they're driving right through. So I didn't know if there's a way we could get some type of flashing lights on the signs, even if it's for a year, to bring awareness as summer is going to happen, there's going to be people walking, the school, this and that. It'd be cool if there was an accident, so just kind of a concern. I've heard from a lot of friends in the area and wanted to actually do something about it, and I just complained, so.
I appreciate that comment. I've spoke to the trustee, or excuse me, the administrator about this, and we, we talked about maybe a flashing light to bring this to attention because anyone who's lived in the village, I'll take myself for an example since I was raised here, it's, it's hard to adapt to it. I hate, I'm embarrassed to say I, I did it once myself. I wasn't going fast, but I drove through it, and I said, oh, hell, I drove through the stop sign. But we have to do something, I believe, to bring it to, especially the people that live in the village who's used to driving down Maple Street without that stop. So we are going to take that under consideration because obviously we don't want anybody hurt. We did this for a safety reason to begin with, and we would defeat the purpose if somebody got hurt without us, taking every opportunity to make sure that they're aware of the stop. So I appreciate you bringing that to the board's attention. I don't know if anybody else on the board has anything you want to say about that?
I just think, I agree, same thing. I lived here for 30 years, and I myself drove through it. I was thinking in the spring, once the snow gets away, we could probably paint a stop sign on the two new areas, you know, just so people would notice there's something there. So, yeah, I mean, if we can get a flashing light or something.
What we could do right now is add another stop sign on both sides of the road. So when you're coming down through.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Get visual on both sides, just on Maple, because everybody knows when you're coming down mine, it's the stop.
Right.
But when you're going down Maple, maybe if we put the two double signs like we did over on Chapman Street or State Street, and then another place we put some, where there's double, so your vision will catch both of them, or at least one of them rather than...
Oh, that, that makes sense. Anything we could do to make it highlighted better than it is?
Either that, or if we get one of them battery-operated caution lights and change the lens to red for now, you know, just to give them an idea that it's a new stop.
Well, it's just to bring it to the driver's attention, which is a good idea, Benny. You know, we, obviously, that's close to the school and parents and everything else, so we, we want to make it as safe as possible. Anyone else? And lastly, we have Becky Dino.
Canio. Yeah. Hello. Hi. I just wanted comments for, oh, Brittany, and thank you so much for putting this together. Thank you guys for considering the, um, backyard hens or chickens or whatever it is. I would be really excited to have it. I think it'd be really great for individuals and also for the community, for, it could be like a learning program for the kids. I think there's a lot in there in the petition that you wrote up that is included in the comments as well, so thank you so much for considering it.
Thank you. Like I said, this, this is a consideration we're going to get a lot of thought to. Obviously, Mr. Turner did a lot of work, and it shows that there is a lot of interest within our village, like I said before. So this board is going to work proactive in this situation, and we will do this as quick as they can to get an answer to the public. I appreciate your comment. Thank you very much. And that is all the people that want to speak to the board today so far. Minutes of the February 6, 2022, 23 meeting, everybody should have a copy of that, those minutes. If nobody has any questions or amendments to those meetings, I need a motion to accept those minutes. Go forward.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as printed. Second.
All those in favor of accepting the February 6, 2023, Greg, were made that meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Bills, Ms. Pelkey?
Uh, no additions, no deletions.
No additions?
Nope.
Okay. I need a motion to accept the bills as provided to all the trustees.
I make a motion that we pay the bills as they're...
Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Correspondents, Mr. Latchmore?
I have a few things for the board. Number one, I presented the board with the email from Brittany Turner in reference to the local law, so I'm going to make sure, I'm not going to read it since you're here. You said you were coming, but I wasn't sure. The second thing I wanted to bring up to the board's attention is on February the 14th, we did receive an email from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation from Ethan Sullivan, and it's in reference to the new dumping station that we're putting up at the sewer plant for the dump, for the raw sewage. The prints have been approved from New York State so that we can start having the sewage brought to the sewer plant rather than down at the boat launch down. So we had a little issue. There was some water that was in the pit and froze. We're waiting for it to thaw out, and it should be up and running very, very soon. The next thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention, it's the village website page. We're underneath contract for the website, for the development of the website. Treasurer Letourneau, myself, and Mayor LaBouny sat in on a video conference call, and they're going to be redeveloping the village website, just to bring it up a couple notches. The price for the contract is going to be approximately $3,300. So I wanted to bring this to the board's attention and make sure that we have the board's support before we move forward renewing the contract for the village website. One thing that we did add to the new website that was lacking in the old website, the residents, or even non-residents, can go onto the village website and ask for alerts for anything new that's happening in the village, and they'll receive the text message. So if there's a weather advisory, or there's public skating, or whatever it may be, if you opt in to receive a text message, you'll be on the list, and you'll automatically receive it. So I wanted to just run that by the board so that we can get the approval to sign the contract. It's $3,300.
Motion for that, Brittany?
Yeah, we need to have a motion for that.
Like a motion that we get into contract with revitalizing web services for the amount of $3,300.
I'll second that.
I need a roll call vote on that. Mr. Latchmore?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBouny.
Aye. The contract for the updating of our website has been approved. That's just basically as the administrator said, approve the information on that website to make sure the residents or non-residents can see what they need for information, whether it's forms or any alerts, and I think it's a good improvement for our village website.
And it'll be a whole new look, so.
Exactly.
We're excited to get it.
Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
I have one other thing I would like to bring to the board's attention. As the board members know, the water plant had an electrical fire approximately three weeks ago. In the event of the fire in the electric, in the water plant, we lost our industrial system. Right now, we're running on just the atom system for pumping the water. No frets for anybody in the village. It's up and running, and it's able to, to keep up, but we'd like to have redundant systems, so we want to have two systems up and running. We had a contractor come out. It's next year contracting Inc., and they started doing the repairs for all the electrical within the water plant. What they found in the course of doing the repairs from the fire is that there's some non-compliance issues within the water plant, and it was validated from Scott Decker from Compton Hall. What needs to take place is we need to install grounds to pumps and tanks from ground bar, install ground bars, install conduit and racks to support grounding system, exterior grounding grids and ground wire to feed the ground bar provided by owner, pull out existing feeders typical of three and four, replace with proper-sized feeders with insulated neutrals and grounds, and I have an estimate from them, and I, I would really like to do it in-house. There's going to be a lot of work associated with it, but the problem that we have is the cost from this contractor, just that we have a good idea, just the material is $27,532.
Now, last to bring up today's code.
Correct.
But the problem is, the building was built in 1968. It's like compliance codes of anybody, even their residents. For instance, if you have a new house that you built in 2002, it doesn't meet today's codes. I mean, yeah, they want to come in and do all kinds of grounding. For instance, if you have a new house, they expect you to have damp route-resistant outlets and art ball breakers. I mean, but if the building was built in 1968, I can see doing the grounding that has to be done in, I think it could be done in-house. We did a grounding grid in our substation. Our substation is about a $7 million project, and we did our own grounding.
That's what I said, we can do it ourselves.
And it can be done in phases where you could do the most potential hazards, if there's any. I mean, myself and Trustee Arnold have been in there when there's been a foot of water on the, on the floor because of malfunctions. To my knowledge, to my knowledge, there has been no electrical issues or electrocutions in there. I mean, yeah, to bring it up, everybody wants a new plant, and that's what our goal is, is to eventually have a new plant. But if we keep putting all new parts in this whole plant, we're never going to see it. No. I just, you know, I understand Scott Decker's absurdity because he's electrical inspector. He goes to school every year. There's new codes that come out every year, and there's, there's restrictions, there's uh, new codes, a new construction. I mean, this is in a real... I mean, I could see what's...
I guess my only question is, you would obviously know more than I would about it because your background, if, if we don't do this upgrade in this grounding and say, God forbid, somebody does get hurt, how's that going to affect us, either one of you, church-wise? Would that put us behind the eight ball if we could do this upgrade if somebody got hurt, or will it not, Mr. Latchmore? Or Mr. Pelkey, you have a, I don't know the answer.
Why? I think this is a recommendation, Mr. Scott Decker. I mean, I don't think he's sitting there holding our feet to the fire. I mean, when you look at, at grounding, I mean, the whole place is all metal.
Metal.
Yep. All the pumps are metal, the tanks are metal, all the piping is metal. All the metal goes where? Into ground, throughout the whole village. That's the best ground route you can get?
Yep.
Your own houses are hooked to those metal pipes.
You've got a lot of lightning storms and stuff like that, and you never hit the building.
Right. I mean...
So your opinion, Trustee Pelkey, is kind of overkill, would you say?
I think it is. If it was a new facility, I'd be all for it. Because it's an old plant, it's a 1968 plant that, that, you know, I understand the work these contractors did, brought everything up to code in that area. That's fine.
At that time.
That's fine, what they did, because it has to be brought up. As this stuff wears out and gets replaced, it needs to be brought up to code. And then, in order to bring it up to code, then we get it inspected by Mr. Decker, and it's tough. But to inspect the whole building, I mean, once you get in there, where's the fine line? They're going to look and say, oh, these breakers are old, they should be replaced. They're functional.
Well, then, yeah, it's played the whole panel.
Right. So how big of a can of worms are you going to open? We're looking at a new water plant eventually. I mean, our debt of our water system is done in 2024. Hopefully, we're in a better position, in a better place to move forward in securing the funds for this water.
Right.
But if we keep putting all kinds of money in this plant, they're going to say, you don't need it. And we're still going to have an old plant. Still have to remove, yeah, we have. We've still got an old plant. 1968 plant. Right.
Well, one of the biggest things I've talked to the people with the water is, we have good people who keep us in compliance, and that, being in compliance so often doesn't put us at the top of the list, it puts us down in the middle or lower than that. And unfortunately, the water plant, that on hold for us, which we need, as you said, Trustee Pelkey, 1968, and we, we definitely need to have an upgrade, so it, it does make sense what you said, once money, we're going to keep investing in an old plant. My only concern, like I said, I, I take the backseat to you, sir. I, I don't know about electricity and enough to make a statement, so that's why I'm relying on your expertise here.
I would go through and do the initial grounding that has to be done. If there's what they're saying, there's no grounds in there, I don't know. I mean, we'd have to, you know, look at, see what it needs. I believe that we can address it in phases where it's not $27,000, and it'll still be safe. I mean, you know, they replaced old fuses with breakers. That was an upgrade, so that was good. Those old, old-style fuses that were in that disconnect, they're probably never would have popped, and that's what caused the fire. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. I mean, I would like that.
My, my understanding from Mr. Decker is if we don't do this, he's not going to give us the, the tag to power up the industrial system.
The new work that they just put in? So he doesn't have no faith in his contractor?
That's not what he's saying. He said that it needs to be, a neutral and a ground needs to be brought in at the facility.
So he doesn't give us this tag, then where does that put us?
Only one system running.
So they, they, the system that burned, we can't use? It's only the atom system we're presently using that we could use until according to what Mr. Decker wants us to bring this up, this grounding?
Unless the, I mean, the village has the authority to supersede Commonwealth electrical inspectors, if the village desires to do so. Because there's nothing that says that, that it needs to be inspected or that it needed to be inspected.
Yeah. I would like to have a meeting with Mr. Decker and, and have him point out his concerns.
He'll be here tomorrow.
And at least, you know, see if we're all on the same page because...
I think we need some more information on exactly what Mr. Decker is referring to and how that's going to affect us long-term and short-term.
I mean, I explained everything to Mr. Decker, what you just said. I mean, we just want to do something to meet our needs now because we're hoping in the next year or two, we'll have a new water facility. So why would we want to spend thousands of dollars in it for something that may just be rubble at the end? And he's saying what he's allowing us to take place right now would be the minimum requirements that he would examine.
I think we can debate this all day. I think we, we need to meet with Mr. Decker.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question, young lady?
Um, yeah, so I'm sorry, so I'm cutting up a little bit, and I'm gathering that you guys have a grant application in for the new building, and because you were saying that if you were to improve this, that might bump you down the list, but are you able to communicate with that grant facilitation program to say like, we've just had this emergency, like, can you bump us up the list?
Well, unfortunately, in the real world, it don't work that way. They, they, they give us a, they rate every municipality based on compliance means, whether their water is oil or good or something along that line.
So we have to be compliant with what he's saying is up to code anyway, so we wouldn't get it if we don't do what the state is saying.
No.
No. I mean, there's no guarantee, there's no guarantees we're going to get anything. We're on the list, and they evaluate us based on a whole different bunch of factors, and so far, we haven't been able to be on the list to get a new grant money on it.
Cool. Thank you.
But I think the best idea that's come out of here, we have to meet with Mr. Decker. Excuse me? With Mr. Decker and get more information as far as what he's thinking, why he's thinking the way he's thinking. Mr. Pelkey brought up some good, good questions, and I think we need to clarify these questions and move forward as quickly as we can. Anybody else? If not, anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
No, that's all.
Yeah, I have...
I'm going to hop out, guys. Thank you for your time. I'm going to sit at the table for dinner. Thank you.
I have a couple resolutions.
Good night, bro.
Resolution 23-3-5 is a budget modification. We're shifting some money from different accounts. Mr. Letourneau, our treasurer, deem this necessary. If nobody has any questions, I need a approval from the board to move this money around.
Second.
All those in favor of putting it on the top, we need the roll call vote. Mr. Latchmore?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBouny.
Aye. Resolution 20, 23-5, the budget modification has passed. We have another resolution, 2023-6. We have two positions that were available coming in March for the village board. Those were trustee positions. We have two nominating petitions that were submitted and reviewed. The first petition was Dale Menard of Ross's Point, and the second petition was also Nicholas Southwick of Ross's Point. These are for two-year terms, and I need the board to approve those two nominating names for election in March.
I make a motion. I make a motion, we accept that. Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBouny.
Aye. The two nominating names, Dale Menard and Nicholas Southwick, will be put on the ballot for the March election in the village. The other resolution I have is 2023-7. We have some hourly increases based on the increase of minimum wage up to $14.20 an hour. It affected people in different departments. It's something we're required by law to pay at least a minimum wage, so I need a motion to put that into village law.
I make a motion, we accept that. Raise up the alerally. Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore?
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBouny.
Aye. Resolution 2023-7, the hourly wage increase has passed by the board. And the last thing I have is, the last meeting, we had discussions about fire department training building, and it was my understanding that Trustee Pelkey and Trustee Arnold were members of the fire department. We're going to go to a meeting. Do you have anything to report, Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
We brought it up at our last business meeting, and the membership over there feel very strongly about their training facility. They understand that it does need work. What they're asking for is for them to have more access to it, accessibility around the building, because it seems like the sand pile is creeping closer and closer to it, and they can't get access to the south side of the building. And they're willing to take all the old siding off it and clean it all up, make it more look, make it look more like, like a construction trailer and put signage on it that it is recognized as a Ross's Point Fire Department Training Facility. And they asked us to give them a little time till the weather turns, so they can do that.
Okay. And just to follow up on that, I, I went with the fire chief, Mr. LeBlanc, and Mr. Latchmore, and Mr. Cooper. We inspected the building, and he, he, the fire chief promised me that if we give him till June 1st, then he would fix the texture 111 on the building and fix whatever was punky as far as the porch or inside the building itself. It looked to me, and Mr. Latchmore, you can chime in here if you want, that basically the inside of the building was in a lot better shape than I thought. The outside of the building was, looked pretty rough because of the texture 111, but they showed, both of us and, and the code officer, exactly what training you guys did with air packs and everything, and it, it seems like a very necessary tool for fire, the fire department. And it was indicated to me that if they did not have this building, then they would have to send all the training people to Latzberg. So based on all the above, I, I think it would behoove the board to give the fire department at least to June 1st to...
Well, why can't, instead of having them have to clean all around that building and stuff like that, why can't we put that trailer, that training trailer over behind the fire station? That way, they have access to a bathroom and stuff like that. I mean, sometimes you get Alberg over here to get Champ Lane, you know, sometimes there are 14 to 18 people, you know? And if somebody has to go to the bathroom or whatever, you know, and, you know, I mean, you've got men and women both. I mean, the bathrooms are right there, the water's right there. I mean...
Was that idea brought up at the board meeting?
Well, I think it's more of a zoning concern, because there was a zoning board member present, and I mean, it had to, you'd have to get a variance.
That's what, my next question is, how is it going to affect our zoning law? And how is the fireman, are they on board of that, or are they, you know?
The impression I got is they'd like to be able to access hallway, somebody cleaned the north side of the building, where there's a strip down through where you can actually almost drive a vehicle on the north side, but the south side is like the sand piles like encroaching onto the building, so it's tough to maneuver on the south.
It looked like somebody took a bucket on the north side and just cleared that whole area back there.
Yeah, that's what they did, yeah, the village did.
And, and if they would do that same thing to the north side, or the south side, I think we would be getting somewhere, because obviously with the branches and the small trees and everything else, it's become kind of a safety hazard to a certain extent, and it's an eyesore.
Then when Jerry is out with the brush out, maintaining the ditches, he can go right around the building at least and keep it somewhat maintained. Because there's more than most of the grass around the...
Yes.
Just to make it look presentable and identify it as a training facility, so people know what that building is for, that it's just not left there as an eyesore.
Yeah.
It's there as a training facility for the firefighters.
Are we all on board with the June first date?
Yeah, it's okay, but I'd like to see it over behind the fire station.
We could talk about that further, but for now, we're given an opportunity to clean it up and improve it, and then I will have further meetings, if necessary, with the administrator and the fire chief, and we'll go from there, and if you want, trustee Pelkey, you can come with us and put your expertise in it, and we'll go from there. Anything else in regards to that building? So right now, I think we'll give them June first. We'll speak to Adam Menard, maybe to clean up some of the brush around it, like you said, and then we'll give them an opportunity, the firemen, to take the texture one eleven, and then put some signage on it, indicate what the building is for. So if anybody in the village has any questions, it's well answered.
Just one other question, will it be the village's responsibility to maintain the outside grounds?
Oh, we talked about that, the fire department said that they would clean up around the whole thing.
But are we to maintain it afterwards, is it, like every other municipal building?
But the problem is, and I don't know, once again, Brian, what we have for the fire department, they're, the chief indicated they don't really have a lot of equipment to cut the branches and the trees, that would be something our village work crew would have to do, or does the fireman have something along that line?
Well, once it's maintained, once it's cleaned up around it, it'd be easy to maintain, I mean...
Yeah, they got chainsaws and something.
I'm sure, you know, I'm sure, I mean, you're only talking about a couple little limbs that are growing out along the side of the building, but it's mostly to keep the grass and those cattail or weeds, whatever those...
So the village crew will maintain it, mow it around it, stuff like that?
At least brush hog it. Okay, I'm not saying mow it, like a lot, but at least brush hog it.
Just so that I can give direction, so that we maintain it.
Because they usually go out and do the...
They do the field, though.
They do the field, and they do that land that we have behind Lake Street there, the old trailer park. They mow that like four times a year, so while they're out, they can just take one trip around that, or two trips around that training facility, and it would be...
You're either out there going down to throw in any house.
Right.
No, it's a, I think we have the equipment from the village crew, and the fire department is a very important part of our village, so I think it would be incumbent upon us to make sure that their use of that building is safe, and they have access to it, unfeathered access to it. So I think the village crew should do that with the brush off, and then after that, the fire department will take it upon themselves to maintain it to a certain degree, and then the village crew will work in conjunction with them. Anything else in regards to this building? If not, then...
Well, do we need a motion to accept that? So I'll make a motion that we give the fire department till June first to replace, bring the training building up to respectable code, I guess.
Yeah, up to the code levels as far as the safety of it, and the aesthetic pleasing of it, and the signage that would be put on it, as trustee Pelkey said, to identify what the use of that building is for.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of giving the fire department until June first to give this building an order, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, June first, we'll convey that to the fire chief that June first is the date that he has to get this building up to code and stuff, so. That's all I have. Trustee Arnold, you have anything?
Well, the only thing I had was the law for one twenty, one twenty dash twenty-five animals on the chicken and stuff, and we're gonna talk about that. I'm sure we're gonna have to talk to the lawyer, village lawyer.
Yeah, we're gonna have to have Mr. Renee draw up some paperwork on it, use his legal expertise and go from there, because after our petition, obviously, like I said earlier, there's a pretty good interest of one hundred and fifty names, that indicates that there is a number of the village residents that want this, and it's our job to provide it if we can, so. We will go in that direction as soon as we can.
And the other thing I had, are we still going on with this rider A, or...
That is, we got a couple phone calls into Mr. Renee. We've emphasized to him the importance of this rider A discussion, and, because we need to obviously sell power, water, to make it, generate some revenue, and we've all had a copy of this rider A now for a while. Mr. Renee is a little slow on the trigger as far as reacting, and we just have to push him a little bit, because this is an important part of our village that needs to go forward.
So this rider A is already in our carrots for, like, our bylaws? So what we wanna do is we wanna put some amendments to it, correct? For like...
Well, we gotta eliminate the existing law that's under books as far as the high-definition power usage that we have there, and then we're gonna have to adopt the rider A, which will talk about permits, and how much power is gonna be allotted, and the supplemental power, which we discussed about not affecting the village residents. So all these things, we need to have...
That's what he has to do, right? That's what he has to do, we're waiting on him.
Yeah, exactly, and trust me...
Because he presented us with this as rider A, which has been in our carrots, I mean, it's already there.
I can assure you that myself and the administrator have reached out to Mr. Renee on several occasions, and I can't emphasize enough the importance of this to move forward, so, once again, if we don't get any action, then we're gonna have to discuss what we wanna do in executive session.
That's all I had, Mr. Menard.
Thank you. Trustee Menard?
I have nothing for this yet.
Trustee Pelkey?
Yeah, I have a question. The Christmas tree down at the village office, I noticed the lights are still on it, they're hanging, they're really blocking them in. Are we gonna do something about this tree eventually? I mean, it looks pretty straggly. The reason why I brought this up, because about seven, eight years ago, we received some evergreen trees from the power authority, and we ended up with six or eight of them, and we didn't know what to do with them. So, back when I was a supervisor, I planted them along the back of the blue building with the intentions of letting them grow, because when we got them, they were only like six foot, with the intentions of letting them grow to about twenty feet, then we would transplant them in the areas where these trees are getting to point that. They're hard to decorate, the limbs are broken on them, and they're getting...
His hand has raised their head.
Yeah, they've, they're pretty much exceeded his life expectancy down there. So, I don't know if the village board would consider on eventually taking these trees and transplanting them to where this big tree is, put a new one there? Because we've replaced that one once before.
Back in eighty-six.
J. Mark Piller brought that one, and that was like a fifteen or a twenty footer, or maybe sixteen, sixteen to twenty-four.
Sixteen foot, yeah.
Yeah, and he...
He bought one in a barb and one there.
Correct. So I was just wondering if the board would consider on thinking about doing something with these trees so they're more manageable?
I take responsibility for that, trustee Pelkey. Jason came up to me, and he asked me about the lights on the tree, and what he indicated to me is if you remove the lights, there's a possibility of breaking the limbs, and, you know, it could damage the appearance of the tree. So I said, at this point in time, why don't we just leave the lights on? If we make a decision, like what you're saying, to transplant another tree, we can remove the lights then. If not, we can leave the lights on and let them grow with the tree, that way, it's gonna save the tree for appearance purposes, rather than, because he said he has to get in here with a bucket to get the lights off.
My only fear is, you know, with the winds that we do get here, the lights aren't gonna last. Next year, when you go to plug those lights in, they're probably not gonna work. So you're gonna have to replace them anyways. So is it time that we do something about this? I mean, we can go look at these trees that I planted seventeen years ago, and there is a technique to transplant these trees.
For the root balls.
For the root balls, and you put a ribbon on the north side of it, and you make sure you put the tree facing back at the north side. And I've had very good luck doing these transplants like that, and it always worked out. And you'd have a beautiful tree, something that's manageable.
So is that something that we could do?
In-house.
In-house.
Yeah, yeah, we do it in-house.
We did that the first time.
Yeah.
Do we leave that big tree up until that one takes root, or you just...
Nope, you take that one completely out, and you put the new one right in that place. Then, you would run a water hose from the water plant, from the side of the water that's not coordinated, and put a soaker hose around it, and let it, because the evergreen needs a lot of water. And that's the biggest thing, as long as you give them water, they're gonna run, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna grow, they'll grow fast.
Yeah.
No, I think that's something we should really think about, because...
At least, at least look at the ones that we planted and see what your thoughts are, and because spring is coming, it's time to transplant this in the spring, so...
Grounds gonna be soft.
No, no, it's definitely a good idea, we'll take a look at those trees that you, they're up by the blue building, you said?
They're on the north side of the public works garage. There's about six or eight of them that we planted, and we spaced them out, so they would grow, and we can take the best look in one.
And we have all the equipment, that we can do this in-house?
Yes.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, maybe bring it up again next meeting. Anything else, trustee Pelkey?
No, that's all I have.
Mr. Cooper, do you have anything you wanna report?
No, everything is pretty well up to date, the only thing is, you were discussing about the fire department and the training, and I'm gonna have to agree with trustee Arnold. I believe that they scheduled, they know ahead of time what time they're gonna schedule training and things there, they should be allowed to put a porter potty over there for the training sessions. If they're gonna be at it for like a Saturday, so party, there should be one right there, and it probably should be a handicap one, because if the firefighter puts in it with his gear on, he's gonna need a little more room, but I think that's, this would solve this problem now. I agree with Mr. Arnold, I've been on these before, there's women involved in this and everything, I think when you accept the fire department's dates, get the work done, I think you should add the letter, we appreciate if you would purchase a, or have somebody deliver a porter potty for the training.
Okay.
You know, that's more than fair.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Cooper?
No.
Any comments on the public? Okay, and we have no executive session, and I need a adjournment motion to adjourn.
I just ask the board of one other thing. I would like to get the board's permission to offer a, maybe one or two free public skating events with next coming weekend events approved at the board, so it'd be free of charge to anybody that comes.
I'll make a motion to do that. Second? Was there any open skating during this break?
Yes, thank you, trustee Pelkey. So, this break, we had public skating today, which was from two thirty to three thirty. We had a stick and puck from one thirty to two thirty. Tomorrow, public skating's gonna be from one thirty to three o'clock. Thursday, we're gonna have a stick and puck, one thirty to two thirty, public skating following at two thirty to three thirty, and public skating on Friday from one thirty to three o'clock.
And my understanding, it's been a pretty good turnout, right, Mr. Latchmore?
Very good turnout for all of us.
So you wanna make one of these days a free day?
It's up to the board.
I think we oughta make...
When does the rink close?
We have a tournament, the Canadian tournament is going to be March the eighteenth. I have spoken to the coaches, if they can commit purchasing ice time that following week, I'll stay open until that weekend, and then the rink will be shut down.
So we're looking at either the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth?
Correct.
And I also told Mr. Lattimore today that if he needs a volunteer to, because there's only pickles down here during the daytime, and he's usually in the pro shop, and I said, I'll come down, I'll donate some time and come down and accept the money for the open skating.
Very good.
And stuff like that.
Very nice of you to do that, trustee Arnold. Any questions on the free skating? I think it would probably be a good gesture on our part to show the appreciation for the people that support our rec center and arena, I think we're on a well aware way to make some pretty good revenue this year, Mr. Latchmore?
We're doing alright.
And I think this would be a good way to show our appreciation to the people who supported our facility, unless anybody else has a different idea. Do I have a second on that motion?
Yeah.
All those in favor of giving a free day for public skating, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And Mr. Latchmore, you have your free day of skating.
When would you like there?
On Thursday or Friday, I'm gonna do it one of the days that you have already have it.
We're gonna do it this week, while school's out, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Say Friday, maybe you'll post it on the sign, say, Friday is free skating.
Perfect, perfect. Anything else, Mr. Latchmore?
Just for open skating.
Just for public skating, yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second?
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.